Yes, I see it on Facebook, so let's go.
Okay.
Hi.
All right, we'll start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of the Flag.
That's beautiful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to our, our virtual May 21st meeting. Can we get started? Can I get a motion to approve the Village Board meeting minutes from May 7th, 2020?
Moved.
Any discussion changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We'll skip by the citizens' comments, trustees' comments. We'll start. You probably are in a different order on your screen than mine, but I'll start with Megan.
Uh, no, just the agenda, thank you.
Ruth?
Just the agenda, thank you.
Bruce?
Agenda's fine.
Andy?
Agenda's got everything I need.
There you go. Mark?
Yes, just, uh, no, I wanted to send my condolences out to the Crowick family. My good friend Pete, a friend for over sixty years, and their, their brother passed away yesterday pretty unexpectedly after a short illness. And Pete was quite a character. Anybody that knew him knew, knew Pete and what he was like, and he'll be missed greatly. So I just wanted to express my sympathy for the family members.
Very good. Thanks, Mark. Yes, Pete was, Pete was a character. He was roommate for, of mine for about three weeks one time. But that was about all I could handle. He was, he was a fun kid. All right, we'll move on to Shep.
Agenda's fine, thank you.
Okay. I have a few things. Got a notice from the Canal Corp. that Arlock 24 is scheduled to be opened by the 4th of July. I sent a message back and said, might it be before the 4th of July? And might the buoys go in at some point so that we would feel more comfortable if we put our docks out, knowing that people coming down the river aren't going to wind up in the shallows over there on the Van Buren side of the river? And I, the response was they can't commit to anything being done earlier than what was stated. Then did occur, encouraged me to pay attention to their alerts, because if they get ahead, they may open sooner than the 4th of July. But it would be by the 4th of July, which is pretty vague, but, but it's better news than I had heard somebody say maybe the middle of July would be nice if it was open for the 4th. So, nice to know that the Canal people are, are working hard and trying to get some things done. I did get a nice email from a lady who must attend Canton Woods. I forwarded to Ruth, Janet Solomon, and, you know, thanking us for our support of the Senior Center and how helpful, educational, and fun the programs are over there. I'm sure people are missing their connection with each other. And hopefully, little by little, maybe we can restore some of that. I've been asked by the New York Water Environment Association and the New York Section American Water Works Association to thank the people who kept our water department, have kept our water department going during this crisis. We have three water people, Corey Perkins, Matt Brown, Brian Trowbridge. And I think Steve had them set up on a rotation, so they were never working together in case one of them got sick. The other two would not be exposed to them, and so they were working a couple days at a time. And there was not a blip on the screen as far as our water supply, it, it was flowing through like it's supposed to. And, but they were there, ready, and it's a chance for us to thank people like that. Also, when I talked to Steve about this, he mentioned that, that Chuck McCollum and Skip Socia have been working basically every day since the crisis was official. They may have left early a couple days because there wasn't anything to do. You know, if you know Chuck, that doesn't surprise you at all to know that Chuck would be in all the time. And Skip came in and did a lot of work on our equipment, so it was ready for summer. You know, kind of converting it from winter to summer, and I'm guessing he had some chance to do some tune-ups and maybe work on some breaks and some of that type of stuff. Nice to know that we have people working for us who could have stayed home, and instead he came in and worked. So hats off to that. And the same with the, with our police department. I mean, they've been there from day one, running their shifts. You know, it's not easy because they're, they face the possibility of being exposed to the virus on every call, every stop. And they're out there doing their job, and, and I, for one, and I think I speak for most everybody in the village, would say that we are very appreciative, Chief, for the job that you and Lieutenant Lockwood and all, all the officers have done for us, and we, we expect nothing less than that because you've spoiled us. And so hats off to your group and the DPW group. They're back now. They had a great call last night. Overnight water breaks and a... Steve and the, and the gang got a workout. And again, from my point of view, to know that when things happen, we have people taking care of it, that I'm, I'm not getting phone calls about, I didn't have water for three days, or I called the police, I don't get anybody to show up. So, so thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the good work that we've done. Let's see here. We're working hard to try to convince the federal government that governments like us, our size, the towns, we are involved with all the local towns. Almost all of them have kept people on payroll and, and benefits, which gets us away from having to put people on unemployment. As, as many as there are on unemployment, we're not contributing to that. So, we have asked, I and others have written to our congressmen, our senators. I spent one night, and I just started picking people from around the state that had names that I thought I'd heard before somewhere in the news or whatever, and, and you don't realize that you're congressman, you have to be in their zip code in order to send them an email. But the senators aren't. The senators are very good. So I was able to hit ten or twelve of the senators and say, you know, we've done our part. Our state is threatening cutbacks. Our county's facing potential problems if the state does that. And we rely on some funding from those two operations. You know, the, the state is talking thirteen billion dollar deficit. So, you know, we were affected with CHIPS, we're affected with our AIM money, some of that type of stuff. So that we are also encouraging the White House. There's a couple of people at the White House that they, NICOM has instructed us to write to. So I'm saying the same thing with them that I've done with, with the others, and say, we did our part. You ask us to, to hold steady, not lay people off, whatever. We would love you to turn around and, and make sure that we're okay. That we have this on the agenda tonight. We have a paving contract. And I know that the town supervisors met with Ryan McMahon today on a conference call type thing, and he urged everybody to go ahead with your infrastructure projects. Some of the belief is that he may hold back money from CHIPS, he may hold back other money. But if we have our project started, there's a possibility there that, that, that will affect us, that they'll continue and give us CHIPS money. So, looks like we would be able to do that. We would have to let Steve know ten days or so if we have a problem. We suddenly realize we're not going to have CHIPS money, that type of stuff. But it sounds like the Republicans who were against rewarding the municipalities on the third go-round are more in favor for the fourth. There's a lot of, i- i- if you follow way laws are passed and stuff, there's an awful lot of stuff in there that has absolutely nothing to do with the COVID-19 problem. Supporting a lot of groups that have no, have not been impacted by this, and so it'd probably be a little while before that gets taken care of. But I did go on, we, we had a webinar last week, NICOM put it on, and they have a chart based on the 375 billion that was going to be set aside for communities. Had they passed that on the first go-round, we would have been, we were down for $2.7 million. Just tells you how messed up Washington is. I mean, it tells you how messed up Washington is. That's half our budget. Doesn't appear that they have any concern over how much money we have, have spent or how much, how short we will be. It's just because of our size. We're a big village. But Lysander was down in that listing for seven million, and Van Buren for four. I'm sure they'd love, everybody would love to get that kind of money, but then you gotta think, the question that gets asked all the time is, where's it coming from? So, you know, we might be happy to get a hundred thousand dollars, but right now we're down for 2.7 million. So, I'll let you know how that one goes. See if there's anything else. They have said, the governor said that Memorial Day is an important holiday, so if you want to have a parade celebration, you can. A vehicle celebration. Ryan McMahon, on the other hand, said, a little late. Most all of us have canceled our parades, and he doesn't think we're ready to have parades yet anyways. So, there will be a small service, the part that usually happens at the beginning of the parade. Reef at the post office, reef into the river, the two cemeteries. It'd be very private. I do believe PACB will tape it, so that everybody will get to see the ceremonies. It was a concern of Ryan McMahon's, as it would be of mine, that people forget why we have this holiday. So that we would ask people to still honor the veterans that, that they're attached to that are in a cemetery. Put up flags. Let's see the village covered with American flags for, for Memorial Day. We just can't do some of the things we normally do. Business restarted this weekend. You know, we got the first phase going for another week. There is a site on govED.com. If you're a business and you don't know if you should be opening up or what the criteria is, you can go on and find that. And it also gives you a place to go if there's a business open that you don't think qualifies under what you've heard of Phase One, that you can contact somebody. They'd rather you do that than call 911, because 911's, we're spending a lot of time with, there's twelve people at the park, there's nine people on a street corner, there's all those kind of calls. So, this is going to ease the burden a little bit. I guess United Shores is open for the weekend. Limit of how many people can be there and how you're set up. So, if people want to enjoy what's supposed to be a nice weekend, United Shores is available. And I think that's all I have. We'll move to department heads. Our attorney, Bob?
Stick with the agenda.
Okay. Code officer, Greg?
Just wanted to let, let you guys know that there is, uh, been an uptick in permits this week. Processed, started to process four today, approved two, but waiting on the fees for a couple of others. Some pools, but mostly fences and decks for now. But it's an improvement, for sure.
Good. That's what we like. All right, we'll move on to Village Court. Mo? Can't hear you.
You're muted.
All right. Talk softball fields. Um, I know that the one league, they were given the go-ahead by their United softball association, so they were thinking June 8th. I didn't know how we were feeling about opening the softball fields or starting to, I mean, they are open, but taking care of them, or how, what are we, do we have any plans, Steve?
I don't have any objection to them being open. If they are, I mean, being reserved by groups, if they are, we'll maintain them as required.
I don't know how that falls under the phases, if this is
Right.
something that's okay. And I, I have gotten another email picture of a lot of people at Mercer Park using the equipment and stuff. We haven't been very real tough on that, just kind of encouraging people not to. So I, I don't know. I suppose we could check with the county on what they think is the timeline on the soft, on softball and that type of stuff. I don't have a problem making contact with somebody tomorrow to find out. Do you know anything different, Chief?
No, Mayor, I, I don't have any information on, on that particular activity.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a phone call or send an email to the county and say, what are you doing for softball fields? Are you letting people use them? Are you, are we waiting to Phase Two? What's the deal? Anything else?
Yeah, the same thing with the gazebo and the pavilion, if it's gatherings under ten. Should we reserve it, or just, you know, they're there if people want to use them? I mean, it is basically first come, first served unless, unless people reserve them.
I would think if they, if they are going to be under ten, that they're allowed, ten or under, I guess, is, is the number with the safe distancing and that type of stuff. I don't know how we monitor it. I mean, we can't have our police department down there sixteen hours a day watching. That's, that's something we'll have to mull over. If anybody has any thoughts on that, and again, I'll check with the county and ask, you know, these are things we just haven't heard discussed, and if maybe they have some guidance for us. Okay?
Okay. And then otherwise, we'll, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Our next one is the treasure. Anna, can you hear us? Oh, Anna?
Well, she was going to try to unmute. She had texted me. She can hear you, but I guess she can't. She can't be speaking to you.
All right, well, she, she has been in the office.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Anna.
Um, I don't have anything really great to report as far as the treasures report goes, but I'm feeling really good, and I thank all of you for all your well wishes and want...
Yeah, we lost you. We lost you. But I think you got the gist of thinking for the...
Are you there? Are you there?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay. Okay. Um, I'm working diligently to get the, the year close out. I know I keep saying that, but I kind of got waylaid there. I've been, I'm back to work full-time now, and I have one more surgery to go, so I'm trying to get all this out of the way before that happens. So hopefully, within the next week, or by the time we have our next meeting, I should have some final figures and close everything out and get on with the new year. And I, I do apologize for being so far behind.
Yeah, we're, we're fine. And we're happy to have you back.
Okay. It's good to be back.
Okay, now we'll move on to the Senior Center. Ruth?
Just a couple things. I want to remind the board that the Senior Center is a polling place. So on Tuesday, June 23rd, the building will be open for voting, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., with the poll workers arriving at 5:00 a.m. So just so you're aware of that, what's going on there. Also, the staff continues to make wellness calls to everyone on our mailing list. And I want to remind the seniors, so please call if they need anything, if there's any way we can be helpful. I did pick up a supply of washable fabric masks from the Onondaga County today, so if people need them, please reach out, and we'll make them available to you. And we did send out an abbreviated newsletter, the second one, since we've been not having the Senior Center open, so we're trying to make sure that we make every effort to communicate with people. And so that, and offer them many ways to reach back to us if they need anything. And that's it.
Just while Ruth is on, the Senior Activity Group has a Facebook site in which a lot of people have come on, that attend the center and just said, you know, we miss everybody, blah, 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 all that kind of stuff. Well, the other day, had a real nice treat. I think some of you probably have heard George Leia sing. He's very good. A little bit Paul Simon type of guy. He was over at the Senior Center on the front porch, and was recorded, he sang three songs that he dedicated to the seniors. And it was on the, on that CW SAG site. It was very nice, nice of George, who's, again, he's a terrific guy, and can really sing. So if you get a chance and you're on Facebook, take a look at that CW SAG site, and you mentioned the other, you already mentioned the other things I had written down, so we're, we're good. We'll move on now to the police. Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, there was a fire yesterday on East C Street in the village. That was an arson fire, and we did make an arrest yesterday afternoon on that particular incident. And, and the woman involved was arraigned, and her bail was set very high. It's, it's arson in the second degree, it's a Class B felony, very, very serious offense. Our business check program, that continues, even though we've got some businesses opening up. We're, we're monitoring that, those businesses that are opening, obviously, we're not checking those while they're open, but those that aren't, we continue to do that. And as I mentioned before, we've identified about 200 locations and businesses in the village, so we're doing that every shift. And we did have an overdose death as well this week that we responded to. Obviously, that presents, as Mayor, you alluded to earlier, in potential problems with exposure. And we limit the personnel that go into those incidents to only one. And just to try and minimize our staff, so there's protocols we're following there as well. We're busy with, with the call, and other going on. There's, there's a couple families that, as I know, the other day, we had a stack of reports with, with just a couple locations. So, our officers have been quite active handling those types of incidents. And we are going to start putting out traffic overtime. We, we get a grant from New York State to enforce aggressive driving behaviors. Like many police departments, we had kind of limited a little bit our, our traffic enforcement to only those activities that were really causing a concern regarding public safety. But I can let the motor in public know that our, our traffic enforcement efforts will be, will be back to, to full strength here. So, please obey the traffic laws. With things opening up, we don't want to see an increase in, in the number of accidents that occur in the village. That number has been greatly reduced, and we'd like to leave it there.
Good.
Other than that, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Any questions? All right, move on to Public Works. Steve?
The only thing I'd like to mention is that for a while now, we haven't been doing park-a-trucks. We're going to start doing park-a-truck again this week, so that if anyone has big cleanup jobs in their yard and they want to do them, call into Village Hall and get the agreement. Mo and I are looking on how to remotely fill out the application. I think we've got it. So, if anyone has an interest in that, just call, and we'll get one put in your yard for you.
Are you still looking to hire a gardener, right?
We are, yeah. Yeah, we, the word got out pretty well from your talk, I would guess, because I got quite a few calls today. I wasn't in the office much because of the water main break, but I've called back nearly everyone who was interested, and I think there was five or six. So hopefully, we'll find someone who's interested in doing that job.
Good. Very good. Thanks, Steve. And I just wanted to mention, not everybody, we don't, I don't get to see much, many of you and talk to you much in between. I have talked with the chief and Ruth and Mo a little bit, and I did have a nice talk yesterday with the judge about when the time comes, and Steve and I have had this conversation, but when the time comes to quote reopen municipal buildings for everybody to sort of have a picture of what they think they would like to see happen. And it looks to me generally like everybody would like to go slow. And not just open the buildings and, and have people wandering in the Village Hall and wandering around the hallways. The judge is going to encourage people to pay tickets by credit card or by check, mail it. Obviously, there may be somebody who doesn't have the ability to do either one of those. They might have to do something else. We may go to a buzzer system on the door to let people in that have to come in for business. You know, Greg has, has shown that a lot of what he does, he can do without having people come into the building. So, you know, those kind of things, or at least things we consider, like, you know, for instance, if, if, if June 15th, the governor says, all municipal buildings are, are allowed to be open. Are we ready on June 15th to do that? Similar to some of the businesses that were ready to, could open on Friday and said, we're not opening yet because we don't, we don't feel like we're safe. You know, we need to do more things to get ready. Some of the different businesses, people don't want to come back to work, they're nervous. Some of them are making more money on unemployment and want to wait till that runs out, whatever. So some, some of the businesses didn't jump into opening up immediately. And Mike has, already has some good plans in his head on, on what he thinks we should do. I know Steve has some thoughts, Mo, the judge. Ruth and I have talked a couple of different times about what might be the steps, you know, what may be the first openings. And unfortunately, probably the thing people are most concerned about is cards. Probably will be among the last things open, because we're talking about sitting people at the same table. They obviously can't social distance, and, you know, kind of tough wearing a mask, sitting, although some of them are dedicated enough, they would wear masks if they could play cards. But you're talking about swapping cards back and forth. And when they have bridge, they sometimes have up to a hundred people. Pinocchio gets big crowds. That all have to be worked out. But just so everybody knows, we, we have been talking about this, and we have been looking to the future. And I think that's all I have. Move on to pending business. We need another motion, Mo, or is the motion in second that we had last week for the handbook still in place, or we tabled it, but?
Yeah, we ended up tabling it, so. I think we should probably do another motion, because it, pardon?
It was tabled, so you can just take it up again. Once the table expires at the next meeting, then the motion's still live, the original motion.
Um, I believe Bruce wanted to maybe amend it, though. Do you want to amend the motion, Bruce? Just to say that we may be doing an amendment, or?
No, because the document states that it's a living document, and we can expect to see changes.
Okay.
So, so we're...
And I think we're good.
We have a motion in a second. The only thing that's happened since the last meeting is Bruce looked into the possibility of a section on discipline. Found that civil service has a section on discipline. Found that civil service has a section on discipline that would, would cover us. And at some point, we may want to take that and maybe make it more local to us. But we are covered. It's not that we don't have a way to discipline, so. So any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. And for those who did all the work on this, thank you. And I know Steve, Mike, Mo and Bruce, particularly you guys, thank you very much for a lot of hard work. Next on the agenda, motion to approve the revised intermunicipal agreement, shared services of code enforcement officers between the villages of Ballensville, towns of Lysander and Van Buren.
I'll make the motion.
All right, this is a revised, at the request of Van Buren. Bob, do you want to?
These are just a couple of minor changes. The, one of them has to do with the responsibility for injury to the code enforcement officer. The, the, if it's a worker's compensation injury, then that would be the, the providing municipality. So that it's under their worker's compensation policy. And then the other basically is that we had in the agreement that the, the borrowing municipality, so to speak, would pay the code enforcement officer that's working for them. But then they wanted to add a provision that the providing municipality, if they so request, can go ahead and pay its own code enforcement officer and then request that the borrowing municipality reimburse them for the, the pay as well as the benefits. I think they wanted just to be sure that when a code enforcement officer is working for a different municipality, that in, that the, the municipality that is sending that officer, in addition to pay, can, can request to be reimbursement, reimbursed for whatever other benefits they may have. You know, which I think would have been included anyway. So I, I don't see these as major changes.
Okay.
So salary being changed, Bob?
I'm sorry?
So is salary something that is?
No, no, it would be, it would be, and that was what, what, what was said was that basically the, the receiving municipality would pay the code enforcement officer as, as though that code enforcement officer were still working for the providing municipality. And then what was envisioned was that the, the check would actually come from the, the receiving or the, the borrowing municipality. And it would, it would be, the pay would be the same as if that code enforcement officer, let's say Ballensville loaned its code enforcement officer to Lysander. Lysander would pay that officer as though they were still working for Ballensville. On the other hand, Ballensville would have the ability to say to Lysander, no, we'll pay that, we'll pay our code enforcement officer. And here's what we want you to reimburse us for, salary, unemployment insurance, workers' comp, whatever, whatever.
So I guess I missed the first part. Are you saying that Lysander might actually cut a check to our code enforcement officer?
Well, what they were saying is they would pay, they would pay the code enforcement officer as though the services were being performed for the provider. In other words, it would be, that would, that would be the, the basis for the compensation. Now, how they actually, what the financial arrangements are something that the towns would, would deal with as far as how the, the cash would get transferred. But the, the, it would probably would be better to have the, the code enforcement officer paid by the, by their own municipality and then just have that municipality get reimbursed.
But how, how are we reimbursing them? I mean, they're not hourly employees. So how are you calculating a reimbursement rate?
Well, that is something that the municipalities, whether it's a percentage of the week or whether they, they would have to, something that would be worked out when that request comes through. In other words, if the, if the code enforcement officer is going to be on call, let's say, that's one thing. If the code enforcement officer is going to be spending 50% of their time in, in the other municipality, or 100% of their time in the other municipality, then, then that's something else. So I think that that's a matter that would be worked out at the time that the request is made.
It's, based on our other, you know, intermunicipal agreements, it's, it's odd. The whole point of the intermunicipal agreement, I thought, was that, you know, sometimes we borrow your guy, sometimes you borrow our guy, and we're going to just, it's always going to be a wash. I mean, to me, this sounds kind of complicated to figure out. So Greg goes over and he, in the, in the course of a week, while someone in Van Buren is on vacation, Greg goes over and does three inspections. And the course of those three inspections, he spends, I, I don't know, four hours. Does he have to somehow present them with something saying, I, I have completed these inspections. It has taken up four hours of my time. I mean, we've never, Greg, have we ever done that in the past?
We really haven't done a whole lot of necessary trading before. But normally, you're right, when we have borrowed each other's equipment or personnel, it's normally because that's what we do. We, we help each other out.
I mean, it'd be like having an intermunicipal agreement for sharing DPW equipment, but then turning around and charging them whenever we borrow something or whenever they borrow something from us and paying them every time we borrow something from them. It seems contradictory to the point of the agreement. Because quite honestly, if we're going to do that, I could go to a rental facility and they could go and get a temp.
Yeah, I mean, there's a little difference between personnel and, and equipment, but.
But I do agree with Steve. In the past, the, the idea was if Greg was going to be out of town for a week and, and Steve wouldn't be available to, you know, because Steve can do some of the stuff that Greg does. But if you just said to Lysander Van Buren, we need somebody for, just to go over and do an inspection of a, of a new apartment building, it's just getting ready to open. Can you go over and, and, you know, probably take an hour? It's usually that the idea is that we'll do it for you, you do it for us. Eventually, it all comes out in the wash. It doesn't happen very often. So if you don't like that idea of, of paying, we don't have to. We can keep an agreement with Lysander the way it is and just not have one with Van Buren, which, you know, Claude said that if that's the way it works out, that's fine with them, so.
I, I don't have a problem with it. It's just something we've not done in the past. And it seems a little peculiar to me, but if that's how we're going to go, that's fine. Greg would have to now have a, a mechanism of logging any time that he goes and does work for either Lysander or Van Buren.
Right, okay. Well, the other thing I can do is we could table this. And let me also talk to some other municipalities and see if they have anything specific, just to get some examples of what, of how other people do it.
I could see if, like, if Greg, for example, is going to be covering for one of the two towns for an extended period of time, that it may be appropriate for them to reimburse us. But I think those one offs, you know, I, I would hope that everyone would just share those services as we have in the past.
I think that's the way it would probably work out. As far as the point how we calculate it, we can handle the calculations. It's not hard. The overtime, the, whatever fees Greg gets paid, we can certainly calculate that for an hour charge. That's easy. If we, if it comes to that, I don't think it will.
Okay, so you want to table it? You want to get a motion to table and put it on the agenda for the next meeting? Or do you want to vote?
I'm happy with it.
Nobody making a motion to table it? You're all comfortable with the way it is? All right, we have a motion and a second. I've lost track, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right. New business. Can I get a motion to modify appropriations for the 2020, 2021 budget year by transferring funds in the amount of $25,000 from the Reserve for Contingency Budget Line Ledger A 1990.4 to COVID Expense Line Ledger A 3097.0?
Moved.
Second for discussion.
Okay. This is, this is just a way for us to keep track of, in one place, of where we're spending money specific to the COVID-19 crisis with the assumption or the hope that at some point, somebody will want to reimburse us our expenses because we continually get asked for, how much do you think this is going to cost you? How much do you think it's going to hurt you in revenue on your budget? And so rather than at the time, at the end, asking everybody to come up with the receipts, we can funnel everything into one line. And if they call Mo, she can go look at the budget line and ask Anna what it is. And we can have that answer without asking all the individual department heads.
I would suggest modifying that just a little bit to move what money is necessary at the time. If you move all the contingency funds over into one account, then if you have something else come up, can you go after that COVID money? You got to move it back to contingency or you just modify it to be as needed?
Anna, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, you really need a number in there. Um, if you want to lower it. But if we, if we don't use it at the end of the year, it would just be in a budget adjustment line to put it where we really do need it.
I just was concerned over the business for the year. If something comes up, we need the money in contingency, now we don't have it. That's my only concern.
I'm sorry, I lost part of that last, what did you?
Just slightly, yeah, if something comes up during the normal course of the year that we need contingency. Now it's locked up in COVID, it has to be for COVID. Now we're out that money.
Well, we would have to, we would have to make an amendment to touch fund balance for, for that other project or if there wasn't enough in contingency. Um, I, somewhere I had, I don't know who, I don't know if Mo has it or not. I had the definition for modifying the budget for, for this purpose. And it explained a little better. As, as far as if we put more into this account from the contingency account than what we really need, we still can use, do a budget amendment like I'm going to be doing pretty soon for last year's budget. Any lines that are short, we could still move it back from that account. We're not obligated to that. Does it make any sense? Do you know what I mean? If, if we need funds for something unexpected that we have not budgeted, that's what you're thinking could happen and we would want to turn to the contingent account to, to move the funds. That's what you're talking about, right, Andy?
Yep.
Okay, um, if we, I mean, suppose in, even if we left the whole 50,000 in there in the contingent account and we needed some major project and it was for more than the 50, we would have to make it a budget amendment to, to take the difference out of our fund balance. So I mean, to me, it, it isn't going to matter whether we move some money from the contingent account or we can move money for COVID from our fund balance if you want to do that, if you don't want to touch the contingent account. We can, we can do too. So I was, we were just, we were trying to keep the budget with the same figure that we, that we passed the budget for by just moving. And that's what they suggest in, in our NICOM manual is to move funds from your contingent account to, to fund a non-expected budget line item first. Do that first. And then if, if you exhaust those funds, fund balance. So I mean, if you want to decrease that a little bit, if you think it's too high.
No, I just didn't want to get jammed up in an emergency, but I guess we can just.
Well, I, I think, I mean, as of, well, like I said, I don't have your final figures yet, but we are, I believe, okay with our fund balance. So unless we have something really catastrophic, I think we would be okay to, you know, ask the board to move money from a fund balance if we have some kind of an emergency.
Okay. Comfortable, Andrew?
Yep, I'm all set.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. If, if as we go along, somebody, one of the board members or somebody has a comment, would probably be good to go back to when we did the first meeting and just say, you know, hey, this is Mark. What about this? Because I know last meeting, Phil Blackwell watched the meeting, but he's had a hard time keeping track of who was talking because he doesn't know you all. And sometimes the comments came quick and he had asked me who, who was questioning this and who, like I remember the next day, who was asking particular questions. But we were able to get it taken care of, so, all right.
That's what the transcript is for.
Yeah, right. Careful, Mo will hit you. All right, item B, discussion, possible motion to authorize the appointment of the following seasonal DPW workers in the Parks Department with the start date determined by the village engineer. First, Arthur Hembold, seasonal parks worker at $16 an hour. Alex Rose, seasonal parks worker at $14.50 an hour. Gunner Hunt, seasonal parks worker at $14.50 per hour. And a seasonal laborer, part-time gardener at $15 an hour. That would be June 1st to October 15th. Takes me a second when I see Arthur Hembold because I only know him by check. So it's kind of funny to see him. That, so we're starting later with our part timers than we would. But we are busy with our full timers. And right now, the full timers have been mowing the parks, right, Steve?
Missed it, yeah.
So it, it's time to get them doing the work that needs to get done before bad weather comes in the fall and we, and it's too late to get those things done. So could I get a motion for those four hires?
Moved.
Second.
It was Bruce that made the motion, Mo.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, there you go, Steve.
Very good, thank you.
Reinforcements. Um, item C, can I get a motion to receive the bids for the 2020 roadway paving project that were received Friday, May 15th, 2020 at 2:00 PM?
Moved.
This is Mark, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And item D, can I get a motion to award the bid for the 2020 roadway paving project that was received Friday, May 20th, 2020 to Northern Asphalt LLC with a contract amount of $232,862.50?
Second, Ruth.
Any questions? We did get two bids. They were both very close. The other one was for like less than $100 more. So there must be, it's the price is what's supposed to be, so.
I have a comment. This is Mark. Steve, I understand we only had 220,000 as, as a budgeted line item. So you do have the flexibility to award that, that amount or only do that up to that amount. It'll come back to the board, okay, with any, any overage, okay?
It's a unit price contract. And what I'll do is I'll remove a street or a portion of a street to make sure that the cost does not exceed $220,000.
Okay, very good.
Wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. I knew you guys were going to talk about it at the DPW meeting and I appreciate you speaking up. speaking up. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We amended paving project to be $220,000. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry.
Excuse me, you, you amended the motion though to $220,000, or, because the bid amount was 232, or, or...
You're right, Mo.
Yeah, you can amend it.
I think it needs to be listed as 232, but as time goes on, Steve will...
Yeah, you, you could, you could amend it by saying that, award the contract at 232, only authorizing the village engineer to spend up to $220,000 on that contract.
I think we need a motion to tell you to reduce the funds.
Okay. We need to do another motion?
He put it in the budget at that amount, it's already, he just needs to manage things.
Yeah, okay. So we're, we're approved. All right, item E. A motion declaring village-owned property located at 36 East O'Nitas Street as surplus and authorizing the village engineer to secure a realtor to sell the property.
This is Mark, I'll make that motion.
Bruce will second it.
I'd like to also mention that when the village disposes of surplus property, whether it's real estate or equipment, that there should be a specific finding by the board that that property is no longer needed by the, by the, by the village. So I think it would be, but as part of the, of the motion, to say that the board finds that the property at 36 East O'Nitas Street is, is unnecessary to the village, and the village no longer needs it.
That's what the gentleman said, isn't it?
I'm good with that, aren't you, Mark?
Yes, I'll, if I need to amend it to that, I'll, I'll amend it as such.
You get it open, Mo?
The motion has it as surplus, is that sufficient?
Yes, that is, that's not, not needed. It is, this is vacant property.
Which property are we talking, Steve, just for clarification?
Castor's Pond.
Oh, okay, it is Castor's Pond, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It's been an expense for years, so it's, it's a good move.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, page two. They get a motion to receive the bids for the Village Hall and Police Department Building's insulation project, received Wednesday, May 20th, 2020 at 2:00 PM.
Eddie, I'll make the motion. This is Mark, I'll second it.
Look at that, 20th, 2020, at 2:00 PM. Lot of 20s there. Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item G, can I get a motion to award the bid for the Village Hall and Police Department Building's insulation project that was received Wednesday, May 20th, 2020 to Upstate Spray Foam Insulation for the contract amount of $40,800?
Moved, Bruce.
Mark, I'll second it.
It was, the bids were very close again. The winning bid was $40,800, one was $43,200, and another was $48,710. So they're all pretty close.
If I could, Dick, I would make a, an explanation to the board, is that in reviewing the bids and after talking with the contractors, the bid is separated into two separate bids, one for the police department and one for Village Hall. I don't believe that I'm going to award, well, award the contract, but I have the right to choose one or both bid items. I believe I would only do the police department. I have no intention at this time of doing Village Hall, because as I've looked at it more closely with the other contractors, it's, it's a pretty good price for that. The police department by itself is a $15,300 item. The balance is for Village Hall. I'm not sure that we're gonna get the value out of it over the life of the building to recover the, the costs with energy savings. I, so I would like to award the contract, but with the intention of only, it would be my intention, just like Bruce said, manage the project, to keep it within a budget also, because there's a line item right now on a pending bond for $36,000. So we really don't even in the bond have sufficient funds to go ahead and do the, the entire project anyways.
Okay. Anybody have any problems with that? Or do everybody understand what we're talking about? This is part of our band bond proposal that Bob was talking about, waiting to get it from the bank. This was one of six, I believe, projects within that bond, and so...
And the other question I might have is whether or not we're in violation of, or any concerns regarding our timing here. Do we have the bond yet? And if we don't, can we actually go ahead and award the contract at this time?
Well, you can, you can award, they, they, the, the materials are with the bank. I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah. We will have the money. I received a phone call today for the $170,000.
Yep.
Yeah, we should have it, they said by Tuesday.
Okay, so you...
Okay, so the, the answer to Steve's question, I would say, would be okay.
Okay. You're comfortable with that, Bob?
Yep, as I said, I was just gonna mention that I had delivered everything to the bank, and they, as, as usual, they got right to, right to work.
Yep, they were very good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. The motion including that Steve is gonna manage that line. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item H, this is discussion, possible action regarding Paul and Ginny, Virginia's request for Paul, a fishing guide, and a couple of his clients to stay overnight at Community Park on Saturday, May 23rd, 2020. Discussion, anybody have issues with it? Does it fall under an okay category?
Well, I find it unusual that, as mentioned, a paid guide is asking for permission to do something for free. Now we're in a COVID situation, I'm not comfortable in releasing that property as used without knowing far more details.
Okay. Anybody else, any thoughts?
I agree with Andy in terms of, I assume he's being paid to bring these two clients into the park to fish, that it's only appropriate that if you were doing that for profit, that he need to share. Not that I have any idea what kind of fee you'd put in there.
What do we typically charge for, like, the pavilion use or, or something down there? Like 30 or 50, some, somewhere in there?
Yeah, the pavilion and gazebo at Mercer are $30. I don't believe, I, yeah, I think it, Community, we did just start with the pavilion at $30 also. A security deposit of 50 is usually required, also.
Figure issue would be the COVID and getting bathrooms available. We don't have them open. It's just inappropriate time to do this.
If bathrooms aren't open, what's happening?
Our, our bathrooms are not open, right, Steve?
They're not, no, at this point, they're not. Would he have a trailer that has restroom in it already? Possibly?
They did not say.
And can I use it the next weekend?
No.
You have to pay double, Greg.
Well, I mean, are, are we, are we opening it up for camping, or, I mean, that's just my discussion, I guess.
I think, I think we don't have enough information, and we're, we're allowing people to spend the night down there, possibly, with the idea, we know that they're gonna have to use the woods to go to the bathroom. I mean, is that, that's not really...
That's not good.
With that, I mean, they have no place to go to the bathroom. Normally, when the Girl Scouts come, I think we leave the bathrooms open that night.
Correct.
In this case, we aren't. So I would think, I would discourage it.
Yeah, I think it opens up the door to anyone to come and ask, can I spend the night in your park? And if it's, you know, then, you know, who do you say no to?
Yeah, right, the Virginias are nice people, and then they do nice things with their tournament, but I think in the situation we're facing right now, this may not be appropriate yet to, to be that loose with our property.
Okay, I can let them know tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Mo.
And there has, there has been some discussions about the park being used as a camping facility, because that's in line with what Canal Corp is pushing for waterfront property along the canal, but any of those discussions come with, there's a lot of room that needs, you know, we, a lot of things need to be done yet before any properties, whether they're in Phoenix or Bolleinsville or anywhere else regarding accepting these overnight stayers. So I, I would think that we're not ready for that at this point.
Yeah, I, I think that's exactly it. We're not, we're just not ready, and I hate for there to be an issue down there and it become a real problem for us, so, Mo will take care of that, I appreciate that. Anybody have anything else before we go and pay bills and get out of here? Shep, don't leave. Where are you going?
Dinner, I just smelled dinner, that's all.
I can't hate you there. All right, if nobody has anything else, I appreciate your patience. This is not the easiest way to have a meeting, but you're making it work well, and I hope that people that are watching, if anybody is watching it live, appreciates that, that we've been able to do something a little different, so that's great.
There's 13 people right now.
How many?
13.
That's pretty cool.
I thought get up to 16.
Could be all of these people that are right here now.
I was gonna say, if you're watching it on your phone as we're having the meeting, raise your hand.
Oh, Anna, raise your hand. All right, can I get a motion to pay bills as audited?
Moved.
Andy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry, can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:45?
Moved.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. See you in June. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Night.